America and to the public for which it stands, one nation. Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Fisher.
Present.
Baskin.
Present.
Helly.
Present.
Waller.
Present.
King.
Present.
Pashusta. Uh, Councilmember Pashusta, I don't see her there. Oh, she'll be absent tonight. We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Item one, we need a motion for the adoption of the agenda. We're going to modify it because Patricia Mueller is going to be speaking on record when we get to number three. So with that modification, we need an adoption motion.
So moved.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second then, Tom.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number two is a motion approving the minutes from November 16th, 2020. Need a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number three, under recognitions and awards, is a motion endorsing a proclamation for the Austin community understanding. I see we have former Mayor Reitz here. I'm sure she'd like to speak to us on this, would you not, Bonnie?
Well, thank you. Boy, that came fast. You keep things moving right along, Mayor.
We don't mess around.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate being here. We also want to thank Craig Byram for his work on this. We had, as a, as a team, brought forth the Austin community understanding, and Craig put it in the form of a proclamation for all of you, and we really appreciate all the work that you've put into it. Thank you, Craig. Do you want us to go over it, Mayor, or do you just want to ask questions since we did present it at the last council meeting?
We'll just ask questions. Does anybody have any questions of, of Ms. Reitz on this?
Or anybody?
I think it's pretty self-explanatory. It's a very positive article, and we'll move forward with it. Thank you, Bonnie. And we need a motion.
I'd be happy to make that motion to endorse the proclamation of Austin community understanding.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Waller, I think your lips say aye. Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. And I believe we have Representative-elect Patricia Mueller here. Would you like to address the council? I'm told you would like to address us.
Well, thank you so much for letting me come for just a moment. I first wanted to just thank you so much for those of you who are supporting me during my campaign, and also really want to thank Representative Poppy, who has really represented this area in the last 16 years and has been. It was a really great run, and I was really appreciative of our race. I wanted to just talk about how I am just getting myself settled in, and I'm starting to start listening to people around the district, and wanted to not only reach out to you to let you know that at any point you can reach out to me, and I would be happy to jump on a meeting or come down when it's possible or when it's necessary for me to listen to whatever, or to address any issue that maybe the council is a little, have some questions about, but also to let you know that we're, I'm working really hard to listen to as many people as possible so that I can represent you the best I can in St. Paul. And so I wanted to give a little bit of time if, if the council members find it necessary to ask some questions about me, or if they, if you had a couple of things for, for me to keep an eye out as I start session in January 5th. Obviously, because of COVID, we are going to be remote for the first month, but I am going to be moving up to St. Paul on January 4th because I want to be there and be close to all of my researchers and all of the things that are happening so that I can make sure to really be doing the work of you guys. So thank you for giving me a chance to talk for a moment, and I look forward to really being able to, hopefully, we can get some, something going so that we can open up these businesses and we can make sure that we get everything moving again in the economy and that when there's bonding monies that are available for us that I can fight really hard so that you can get the money that is due to you as well. So any questions or comments or things that you want me to especially look out for as I've been, as I start this new session?
Counsel, any questions, comments?
I've got a quick question. This is Laura Helly. I, forgive me, I don't know how the timeline and the process is on this, but I was just curious if you know the kind of committee assignments you might be getting at the Capitol. I know a lot of those are based on seniority, and we've been blessed to have a long-term representative up there who had some really key committee positions, so I'm just wondering if you know where you'll be serving. Thank you.
Great. No, thank you for the question. Obviously, with my background as being in education, that I would be on an education committee, but I have requested to be on agriculture committee. I've also requested to be on a committee that's called Industrial Education and like, it, it's the rename for the Greater Minnesota Jobs and Economic Development Committee, and so I have asked to be on that, especially since in Austin, we have the CEO program looking at how we can develop apprenticeships and different paths to education that we see here in Austin. I really want to be able to support and highlight the great, amazing things that we're doing here in Austin because we have some amazing programs and people who are working in the community here. I have been told, and the other two committees, let me see, I think I had five, two, two-ed committees, an agriculture committee, the greater, and the other committee that I asked to be on is public safety and civil justice reform. So I have asked to be on those five committees. I've been told that I'll probably get three of those, and that, just like what you said, it's based off the seniority, and so I probably unfortunately will not get on the agriculture committee, but I have a lot of people who have friends and network people who have been there and are on the agriculture committee, and I will be, you know, constant communication with them as much as I can so that I can be able to give my two cents, and this is what my district needs. So as of right now, those are the five committees that I've requested, and we'll see what I end up getting. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, thank you, Ms. Mueller. We have a tradition of working closely with our representatives. I know one of them was here today. I'm sure it'll be shortly before.
I'm sure it won't, it won't be long before you come in and meet with our new mayor and
Craig and maybe some of the staff, so we look forward to working with you. It's a new world out there, and we're all going to have to adapt to it, so congratulations on.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate you giving me a few moments to address the council, and I hope that your meeting goes really well today.
All right. Thank you very much for being there.
Yeah.
Number four, we need a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller. King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Five is a resolution receiving tax abatement application from New Horizon Homes LLC. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor members. This is another tax abatement from New Horizon Homes. The estimated value is 334,790. This is in the Nature's Ridge subdivision, 2103 14th Avenue Northeast. The estimated abatement is $8,880. This is in conformance with our tax abatement policy. This is a public hearing, and we need approval or denial of the abatement.
Counsel, any questions or comments? If not, it's a public hearing. Is anybody out there anywhere have any comments, questions? If not, we need a resolution to approve or deny.
So moved.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Under petitions and requests, six is a resolution accepting 2021 Hormel Foundation grants, awards. Tom?
Yes, before you tonight are the approvals that the Hormel Foundation has given for the city of Austin's allocation for 2021. It includes two, four, six, seven items, including chip loan expansion for $75,000, nature center education programs for $45,000, delivering the data hotspots for the library for $45,000, Shirley Thiel Park drainage for $70,375, New Bridge and Todd Park for $100,500, fire prevention and education for $5,000, and transitional housing improvements for the HRA for $36,540. In addition, we received quality of life pass-through dollars for the Chamber of Commerce, for the Art Center Chambers Leadership Program and our fourth, potential Fourth of July Festival for $91,759, and also $23,880 for a new electronic scoreboard for the Marcus and Ballpark Association down at Marcus and Park. So with that, we do request counsel approve a resolution approving the grants for 2021. And again, we thank the Hormel Foundation for their great support for the city of Austin for another, another year.
I don't think there's another city that I've come across in my 14 years that has a foundation that gives to the city like this. We're very fortunate.
The ones I talked to are very jealous. Let's put it that way.
They are very jealous. Okay, so we need a resolution for number six.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Seven is a motion for reviewing an ordinance of right-of-way management. Mr. Lang.
Following the last work session, it was recommended to move the right-of-way resolution or ordinance back to council without the undergrounding portion of the ordinance. So in the last couple of weeks, City Attorney Byram has worked to reformat the document to make it consistent with our current ordinance, ordinances, and structure, and so before you tonight, I have just included, again, our right-of-way management policy guideline. That'll be a tool that staff will use to manage the ordinance and how we will implement it, and give our staff guidance on, you know, if people ask questions, do I need a permit for this or a permit for that? This, this policy guideline will help them, help our staff to determine when to apply the ordinance and when not to. Along with that, we have also included for you our proposed right-of-way management fee structure. We have set it up based on hours that we have estimated for each individual program, whether that be the right-of-way, the registration fee, the excavation permit, or any of the obstruction permits. We've kind of detailed those obstruction permits and how, how our staff time would, how we anticipate our staff time would apply for those, and those right-of-way management fees are also included in our miscellaneous fee structure setup that will be up for council review at a later item here tonight. So with that, should be pretty straightforward from everything that we've talked about at the last few work sessions, and I would open it up to any questions anybody might have of me.
Anybody have any questions on this? We worked, we talked the heck out of this last couple of meetings, so we should be pretty clear on it. If nobody has a question, we need a motion for.
Hey, I do, Mr. Mayor, Stephen, one question for you. I know in the packet that we've got the utilities request that we add a, unless this requirement is waived by the city language, would you object to that? I mean, it feels like it still maintains the authority within the city, but maybe gives us a little bit more discretion, which I don't think it would be a bad thing for us, you know, long-term to have kind of the public works director if we have stuff that, you know, pops up that we don't, that, different, I don't know, thoughts?
The language that is highlighted in the Austin Utilities memo, highlighted in yellow, that is currently in the ordinance.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you for that.
Anybody else? If not, we.
Mayor, Mark Nibar.
Okay, Mark.
And I just want to thank the council for allowing me to speak at the last three work sessions, and this is kind of our final position I wanted to share with the council as you prepare to vote for that, and, and looking forward to, you know, working with Stephen and his, and the city department going into 2021, and hope there's some discretion as we move into it. This will be all new to us, and we want to kind of, I guess, get our feet wet as we move into 2021 construction season and fulfilling some of the ordinance requirements. So I hope there's some tolerance of working together and kind of easing into this ordinance for us in, in 2021. So I just wanted to share that with the council and Stephen and his department today.
We have a long history of.
Are you still going to come back and visit us at the work sessions like once a month just to kind of deep thoughts from it, or you got to be nicer to me?
Well, we have a long history of working together with utilities. I know Stephen wants to.
Yeah, I sure will. All right, thank you. I just want to share that. Thanks, Mayor.
I have to talk louder? Okay, Mark Arden's going to say something nice about you, but I'm not going to now because nobody can hear what I'm saying about. We do have a long history of working with utilities. Well, we'll be fine on this. I know, I've talked to Stephen, I know Stephen wants to work with you, and it's just, we're just trying to find out the best way to get, to get these things done. All right, anybody else? Anybody else? If not, what do we need? We need a motion for preparation.
Make a motion, preparation of the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero, Your Honor.
Now we need an ordinance for adoption and publication.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Master Dinkert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
I believe under our ordinance, Mr. Byram, correct me if I'm wrong, but unanimous vote, all in present, as long as at least five members are present, we will classify it as passed, so ordinance passed.
That is correct.
All right. Thank you, counsel. Number eight, reviewing an ordinance for a fire hydrant maintenance fee. Chief?
This is second reading, and nothing's changed since we brought it to the work session and last council meeting, but if there's questions, be happy to answer them.
All right. The reason we're doing this is because we did not have a unanimous vote. Is that correct? So we'll, I think the arguments are out there. Anybody have anything before we put the ordinance up again? Then if not, we need an ordinance for, or motion for preparation of the ordinance.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin. Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Ordinance passes five, uh, motion passes five one, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number nine is a resolution.
Eight B.
Oh, BP. Okay, we need an ordinance for adoption and publication of the ordinance.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Ordinance passes five one, Your Honor.
Thank you. Nine is a resolution setting polling locations for 2021 elections. Ms. Hazel?
Yes, I'm sure you've all heard that the county is going to have a special election in February and in April because there will be a primary. We'd like to set that polling locations back to our standard locations. We don't need to pay $500 to rent the Holiday Inn for one-sixth of the population. It just affects one precinct for the elections for the District One County Commissioner.
Anybody have any questions? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second? Come on, folks, I know there's got to be a second out there.
Second.
All right. Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ten is a resolution establishing license and operational fees for the city for 2021. Who's this, Craig?
Anne.
Anne, this is you again, I believe.
Um, yeah, this is our annual resolution that we do. It has all the miscellaneous fees. The first portion is license fees, which is my area, and then there's other operational fees that different departments charge for this. So we have reviewed the fees, made some modifications. We review them every year on a yearly basis just to update them. So if there's any questions, that individual department could handle their fees.
Counsel, are there any questions? Elaine Hansen, I see you're out there to put the chamber stamp of approval on this for us. Go ahead.
Well, as you know, it's, it's a terrible year for many small businesses, and so just looking for any type of assistance. I, I had a member that reached out to me regarding the fee for restaurants, and Mr. Clark provided some information and background on it. The question I had tonight would be the notification of that increase in fees. I know it was approved December 2019 for restaurants, $25 increase to $75. When is that notification sent out to the businesses?
Craig, do you know that?
I'd just like to clarify that it went from $50 to $75, not $25 to $75.
I'm sorry, a $25 increase from $50 to $75.
Yes.
Yes, but.
Um, we don't individually send that out in 2000, let's say at the end of 2019 when we set the fees. We sent out the renewal notices mid-October. It was before the election, so, so they would have received their notice of their fee for 2021 at that time.
Okay, so there's not anything prior to the time that they would receive a renewal notice in October for fees going into effect January?
Um, no, we don't, we wouldn't waste the postage on that per se because we, we send out a lot of licenses, so unless, you know, they listen to the council meeting, our website is updated, anything like that. So I will note that a lot of the license fees, I can only speak to the licensing portion, haven't been changed in the almost eight years that I've been here, and then they haven't been modified for some long time previous to that, as Cheryl, the gal who works in my office, can attest to. So unfortunately, it's just kind of unfortunate circumstances with the pandemic that it didn't raise $25, but it wasn't raised during the pandemic.
And, and Elaine, it wasn't our, I mean, we're trying to keep, we know businesses are hurting, but you have to remember, you guys asked for a 4% levy. We gave you that 4% levy this year. We can't do a 4% levy and then start getting rid of all of our other license fees and things like that. We can do that, but we'd have to raise the levy back up, you know? It's just a choice of who's going to pay, and, you know, this is the way we're doing it this year. I wish we didn't have to.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I just have a duty to respond or to research when a member asks a question, so I needed to have clarification and make sure that I bring forward a concern that they have. So I appreciate your time in helping to understand so I can respond back to the member appropriately and let them know what's going on. And I do recognize that the city council has been very responsive to the requests from the business community, and, I mean, we're all in this together, and we appreciate that the city has stepped up to help in so many different ways. So thank you again for your ongoing support of the business community.
Well, and we appreciate you coming forward with your concerns. We hope you continue to do that. You know, that's not, that's not what I was saying. We like to hear your concerns. We heard your concerns about the 4% levy, and we responded, and we respond when we can. I've talked to Craig on this some, and, you know, there's nothing we can do on these fees this year, so we're trying, we're, we're all doing the best we can, but I thank you for your concerns.
Absolutely. Thank you again so much for your, your ongoing support.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we need a resolution for ten.
So moved. So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Eleven is a resolution approving an ICM agreement with Austin Tank Wash. Stephen?
Yes, this is the Austin Tank Wash located at 617 11th Street Northeast. We have had ongoing conversations with the Tank Wash. Some council members have also heard of issues related to the Tank Wash as it relates to access to their facility. We have had an ICM agreement with them for a couple of years, and one of the stipulations in the former ICM agreement was to complete a drive-through bay, and I'd like to report that that was completed this summer and early fall, so that will make a big improvement on our road right-of-way access to the building and help the operation function better without impacting the traveling public on 11th Street. So with that, we would recommend working, or passing this proposed ICM agreement, which still continues to monitor their waste discharge from the facility related to flow and strength and suspended solids. And with them now making these upgrades, we would recommend extending out a longer duration agreement than what we had in the past, with this being a three-year ICM that would expire in December 31st of 2023. So we would recommend approving this agreement.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? If not, we could use a resolution for number 11.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Twelve is a resolution ordering feasibility reports for 2021 street construction projects. Mr. Lang?
Yes, this is just our list of street projects that we plan to assess for the year 2021, also any other larger projects that we want to make sure that we do a feasibility report for and have that reviewed by council. So our list tonight includes 8th Street Northwest and 9th Street Northwest. We've been working up in the northwest area for many years now, and this is just a continuation of that. We're also planning to reconstruct 1st Street Southeast and 1st Avenue Southeast. This area is kind of down by the post office, concrete roadways. We're also looking at 19th Street and 1st Avenue Northwest. This is over by the new Alternative Learning Center and St. Edwards. Fourth project on the list is 16th Street Northeast and 1st Avenue Northeast. This is kind of by Harding Mechanical and east of East Side Lake. Fifth project is a mill and overlay project. We're looking at 8th Avenue Northwest by Austin Medical Center and Bremer Bank. We're also looking at 8th Avenue Southwest, which is far southwest west side of town. And number six on the project list is 4th Street Northwest and 3rd Avenue Northwest intersection. That is the signalite, signalized intersection by Pacelli, which we're planning more discussion coming up at the work session later tonight.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments on this? If not, we need a resolution for twelve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Thirteen is a resolution approving a one watershed, one-plan sub-agreement. Mr. Lang?
As the one watershed, one-plan group continues to work, move forward in their process, they've identified a list of projects for the watershed. And what this sub-agreement details is just how individual entities would get reimbursed through the grant process for their projects. For the City of Austin and Austin Utilities, the project identified that fits in the one watershed, one dis, one watershed, one-plan is the well capping program that Austin Utilities has. So this sub-agreement just indicates how grant dollars that would be available for that project would be funneled through the Soil and Water Conservation District, and then from there, City of Austin or Austin Utilities would need to make an application for a refund of any costs associated with that grant through, to the Soil and Water Conservation District. So with that, we would recommend approval of this sub-agreement for any future grants that would be available through this program.
Counsel, any questions? If not, we need a resolution for thirteen. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Fourteen is a resolution awarding a contract for 8th Avenue Southwest pond modification. Mr. Lang?
Yes, we had talked previously back in October probably about making some revisions to a storage retention pond located on the end of 8th Avenue Southwest near Turtle Creek. We went out and solicited bids for that. We got three bids back, and Yuland Brothers were the low bidder on the project. As you can see, they were half the cost of the estimate and the other bidders. I did reach out to them, making sure that they were, understood the project clearly and were comfortable with their bid. They are, so we would recommend awarding this bid to Yuland Brothers contingent upon the successful completion of the DNR grant. The DNR grant will be the next step. We'll reach out to the DNR, make them aware of the final bid numbers, and look to secure a grant for this work. And it is planned that the work would be completed sometime next summer when conditions are dry enough and conditions are favorable for the work.
Counsel, any questions or comments? If not, we need a resolution for fourteen.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Fifteen is a resolution accepting donations to the city. Need a resolution? So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. The next one are three resolutions about minor subdivisions petitioned by, we'll start with the Country Club. Holly?
Your Honor, your Honor and councilmembers, just for a brief background, we haven't had any minor subdivisions for a while. The minor subdivision is an exemption from our more substantive requirements in our subdivision ordinance, basically based on the fact that the, of the relative simplicity of the requests that have been made. The first matter, the Austin Country Club petition, that includes a review, a survey, and a legal description of approximately five acres of unplanted property, which is located at the Austin Country Club. Hormel Foods has an agreement with Austin Country Club to purchase that parcel. They are developing a plat that they will submit later, but at this point, no plan for development has been proposed, and the request for a minor subdivision is to expedite the sale for the applicant. The proposed subdivision was reviewed by our engineering department, the county engineering department, and Austin Utilities, as well as myself. There were no concerns that were brought to my attention. Do you have any questions?
Counsel, do you have any questions?
No.
If not, we'll start with sixteen, approving a minor subdivision petitioned by Austin Country Club. We need a resolution.
So moved to resolution.
Is there a second? Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Abstain.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five-zero with one abstaining, Your Honor.
Thank you. Seventeen is a resolution approving a minor subdivision petitioned by Laverne Carrot.
This particular matter, it's a 2.5 acres of unplanted property that is in the, part of the larger parcel that Laverne Carrot annexed into the city a couple of years ago. There's a mini-storage located on that parcel, and Mr. Carrot has an agreement with a buyer to sell that particular parcel. It's already developed again as miniStorage. This proposed subdivision was reviewed by city engineering, my department, and also Austin Utilities. They found that the approval of this request should be contingent upon execution and recording of covenants preserving utility and trail easements, and we have drafted those easements, and we'll, we'll have an agreement to sign those moving forward as part of this resolution.
Counsel, any questions?
So Laverne wants to tear down the mini-storage units and sell it to a developer to build a house on that property?
No, no, no. The people who are purchasing want it, want miniStorage. They're purchasing it specifically to manage the miniStorage.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So nothing, nothing should change.
Okay, any more questions? If not, we need a resolution for seventeen. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Eighteen is a resolution approving a minor subdivision petitioned by Thomas and Terry Nording. Holly?
Yeah, this one, the Nordings own two parcels in Nature Ridge. One parcel is vacant. The petitioners wish to, in addition to their house, which would extend onto the adjacent lot. The proposed subdivision was reviewed again by city staff and Austin Utilities, and found that the approval should be contingent upon disconnecting the water and sewer to the main for the vacant property, which is pretty standard, and then moving a fence on the south end of their property that encroaches on the adjacent property. Did talk to the petitioners, and they have agreed to that contingency as well.
Counsel, any questions? If not, we need a resolution for eighteen. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Nineteen is two motions granting the Planning and Zoning Department the power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at A 1208 10th Avenue Southwest to Ramira's property. Need a motion? So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
And nineteen B 806 5th Avenue Northeast, Warranton Properties, Al Housini, the motion.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number twenty is a resolution approving a wastewater treatment plant 2020 bonding bill application. Stephen?
Yes, the City of Austin was successful in receiving a $7.45 million appropriation in the 2020 bonding bill that was just signed the last month or so. That is great for the community, great for the wastewater treatment plant project. These funds are designated to be used for engineering, design, and construction administration. We are working through the engineering design portion of the project now, and then future funding will be used when the project starts to oversee the design and inspection of the project. So as part of the bonding bill requirements, the city needs to pass a resolution accepting the dollars and designating representatives for signing the agreement, and also ensuring that we have the capability to complete a grant of this nature, which, working with Mr. Dankert Finance Department, as well as Mr. Clark through administration, would feel very comfortable that we can move this grant forward. So we would recommend and request council approve the resolution for authorizing this, these bonding bill dollars.
Counsel, any questions? If not, we need a resolution for twenty.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. That concludes our formal council meeting. Are there any citizens here? Not here, but is anybody on the screen, Tom? Do we know that wants to address the council on anything?
Anybody on this Zoom meeting that wants to address anything that wasn't on the agenda?
I would like to speak, if I may.
Elaine Hansen, Chamber of Commerce.
Go ahead, Elaine.
Hi, at this point, I just want to say thank you for your great support for our Austin Winter Extravaganza. We kicked it off on Saturday night with our Santa visit at the Fairgrounds. We're not sure how many thousands of people we saw. We did give out 1,000 gift bags. Santa was very busy, and if, if there was any judgment of how successful it was, it's certainly the smiles and smiles that we saw. It was so heartwarming to see people of all ages come out and join us for the event, and Saturday also marked the kickoff for our lighting contest, and we have 35 entries, and as of this morning, we had 140 votes already posted, and voting is open until December 29th. And we are excited that, Your Honor, the mayor is one of our judges for the mayor's choice, and there are lots of great options, and just the excitement around the event is really continuing to move forward. We are putting together our plan for our January event, which will be our Snowflake Days, so we'll continue more fun, and followed by February Follies and March Melt. So we just want to again thank the city for your support, and just excited that we could bring forward a really outstanding community event that also helps to support our business community. So thanks again for everyone who participated and your support of our four months of Austin Winter Extravaganza.
Well, thank you, Elaine, and thanks to the chamber. We do have somebody doing some activities for us, and I think you're, you're one of very few out there that are right now. We're fortunate to have you, and contact me as far as that snow stuff, I'd be, I'm happy to be involved in that, so thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Anybody else that wants to talk, to address the council? If not, Santino is our honorary council member. Santino, how are things going? There you are.
You're on mute yourself.
You're on mute.
You're on mute, Santino.
Yep, can you hear me now?
There you go.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, and we are doing fine just dealing with distant learning, with the kids and a lot of challenges. I want to thank fire department. Last week, she invited me to go and visit their site, and it was very good to get familiar about the fire department and what they do for our community. I'm thankful for that. Otherwise, I have nothing to say, but just to say thank you for the opportunity and chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Santino. Reports and recommendations, I usually go last, but I want to say something first because it's going to get worn out by the time it gets back to me. Stephen, I think you guys did an excellent job on the downtown lights. We didn't give you very much to work with. I think they look very nice. With that, we'll go around. Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Baskin.
Only thing I have quickly is, I would like us to do some investigation of doing another resolution here to close out the year on the prorating of liquor fees. I know our previous one, when bars were not able to sell liquor, was March through June. And so I, in my opinion, I think it makes sense for us to do something through the end of the year. You know, if the executive order can take past that, we can always come back and attack it next year, but I think, well, it'd be a nice gesture, and as well as, you know, it'd be helpful to get some dollars by the end of the year into the pockets of those businesses.
Okay.
Councilmember Helly.
I just have a special message to Stephen Lang, which is, I know that he's really going to miss me after I go off the council in January, but, but tearing up the street right in front of my house is really not necessary. I could have come in and just visited, you guys. You didn't have to come to me, but looking forward to seeing everybody next summer in front of my house.
That was Mitch's idea.
Councilmember Waller.
Mitch.
Councilmember Waller.
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember King.
Just, you know, thank you seems like two words that aren't enough for what the Hormel Foundation continues to do for the City of Austin. Tonight, we, they approved us for nearly $500,000 of what would be certainly a big boom for the quality of life. Ten, I think a little over $10 million for the community this year alone. It's just actually remarkable, and again, thank you isn't near enough, but we certainly appreciate, appreciate the Hormel Foundation as a citizen and as a council folk.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Yes, just a couple of things. We did have a park and rec board meeting this past week. A couple of things that came out of that. We did receive a very nice letter from Spruce Up Austin thanking Randy Huthner and his crew for all the work they've done helping Spruce Up this year with all their projects. Also, I want to thank Stephen Lang and Joel Sunderman. They did provide some extra help to the park and rec department, and Randy reported that they have made significant progress on tree removal, tree trimming, and a lot of the tree work, so the weather has helped as well, but do appreciate that extra help from the street department, and just want to send kudos out to the park and rec and Forest Street Department and the tree guys for the work they've gotten done this fall to get caught fall to, to get caught up as much as possible. That's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
That's it. Craig.
Thank you, Mayor, members. There's going to be open registration for new, newly elected council members, so I'll be reaching out to our new members in that regard. That opens on December 11th. So while I see you on the call, we'll be reaching out to you to see if you have interest in participating in the League of Minnesota City's new member orientation. We also, there's also an experienced leaders session. If any current council members that'll be returning have interest in that, let me know. There's, those obviously will be online. The Experienced Leaders is February 2nd through the 13th. If that's something that's interest, interests you, the league always does a nice job for that. So that's all I have.
Okay.
Just one update. Remember Wednesday night, 6 o'clock, truth and taxation here in council chambers or via Zoom, required hearing by state law.
That's a lot of fun, too.
It is. Loads of fun.
Need a motion to adjourn until December 21st. Is there a second?
Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller. King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Five-minute break if we could?
Sure. Five-minute break.